Item A for a liquor license, 139 Main Street in Sturbridge pursuant to GLC 138. Then we'll move to department reports, town administrator update, action items including possible action on signing the Sturbridge Housing Production Plan in the amount of $20,000, change of manager for Pizzeria Uno Bar and Grill, consideration of possible action on a common victual license to the Little Rest Stop, consideration of possible action to partner with the Holland Select Board on a joint application to Commonwealth of Massachusetts Community Compact IT Grant Program for fiscal year 2026, consideration of possible action and declare items as surplus is listed in the DPW memorandum dated November 21, 2025, possible reappointment of William Barnesley to the Historic Commission with a term to expire November 17, 2028, consideration of possible action on appointing Michael Harrington of the Public House to the Betterment Committee for a term to expire December 1, 2026, consideration of possible action on accepting the resignation of Carrie Leonard, full-time dispatcher as of November 13, 2025, consideration and possible action signing of certain listed 2026 license renewals that will be listed at that point in the meeting, old business, select board member to be appointed to the Town Betterment Committee and the Personal Classification and Policy Committee, abatement of the water meter, the previously discussed water meter test, new business, correspondence, approval of certain minutes, citizens forum, then an executive station which I anticipate we will adjourn from. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to start with a moment of silence. Andrew Wolfe is a 25-year-old National Guard member who was shot in Washington, DC. He's under serious, he's in serious condition in the hospital, basically fighting for his life. And Sarah Beckstrom is a 20-year-old who died in that assassination. And there's a lot of politics played on both sides about all of this, but these are two basically children, one whose family's lives will never be the same. So please take a moment of silence to think of them and pray for them. Thank you. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
I just hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving.
I echo those thoughts and nothing else from me. Thank you.
Same. God's blessings going into the holiday season.
Yes, and I will second all of that with a reminder for everybody to stay safe. And if you're having any drinks, stay off the road. With that, we have some time to kill until the 9:40, excuse me, the 6:45 public hearing. So Robin, could you please kick us off?
Just a couple of updates. The Teamsters will now officially be representing the DPW. We've done a voluntary recognition. We've gone through the process. It was a decision by the body to do that. So we will recommence negotiations based on where we left off and we'll work with the Teamsters on navigating our way through that process. So hopefully we can resolve things quickly.
And also I just would remind the audience, be quiet, please. Excuse me? All right. So thank you. Go ahead, Robin.
And then the next thing was Sturbridge Village is working with us and very graciously is going to grant us an easement of land for the new water tower and access up to that new water tower. They put it in front of their board without issue and they continue to be very good partners with us. As we move forward, keep your eyes open for holiday events. We have the house lighting. We have the New York trips. So things are busy and we wish everybody happy holidays from the staff side.
Great. Okay, so I think we probably can get to action item A, right?
Yeah.
So that's the housing. So basically the bids came in on the housing production plan and one was 20,000 and one was 22,000.
Yep, and Ms. Sonnenberg has worked with us before and has done great work. So we're pleased that she was the low bid and that we can continue to work with her.
And just could you explain for the audience what the bid was?
So yeah, these were for the housing production plan. So as you know, we have a housing authority and we bring in an outside consultant that's funded through that CPA funding to assist us in writing the programs, ensuring compliance with the housing laws. And this particular person has worked with us. We've already got a down payment assistance program. We've got some emergency housing programs. So it's been a very successful program. And so Ms. Sonnenberg did bid it and the other bid was from Central Mass Regional Planning Council, which is obviously a very good organization as well.
What has she already done for us?
She worked with us on the down payment assistance plan and the mortgage buy down, the first time buyer plan. So she helped draft all of those policies. She works directly with April, our housing person, our part-time housing person. And so she, I will say this, that one of the things that we've been very successful with this is that we have concrete plans. A lot of people set up these housing trusts and they have all of these plans and no actual programs. And inside of the two years that we've been doing this, we've now established two formally, and there are two that I believe are in process, or we've established three of the four. But there are basically four major plans and we actually now have something concrete. People, and we will be having a housing forum tomorrow. Jean Bouman and April will be here along with a number of vendors. So we do encourage people who feel they may qualify for housing, for assistance, they can come, find out if they do, what they may qualify for and what these programs are. There will also be a forum on Saturday. So we have to do two. These have been advertised on the radio and in local papers. If anybody in the public listening has questions, please feel free to call Town Hall tomorrow and we will, and we will, you know, give them more information. But there will be vendors here, real estate banks assisting people through how to go through the loan process, how to see what you qualify for, what these plans are that we have that we can give grants to and assist with.
Right.
Did we put something on our website about that?
Yeah, I believe it's on the website as well. Yep. We had made, we had very specific advertising requirements from the state that we had to hit certain radio stations. We had to hit certain regions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the TA to sign the agreement with Karen Sonnenbor consulting for the Sturbridge Housing Production Plan for the amount of $20,000.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? All right, moving on to consideration and possible action on the select board signing a change of manager for Pizzeria Uno Chicago Bar and Grill, 100 Charlton Road, from Dorothy Weagle to Christopher Brown.
Anybody coming down?
How are you doing? I assume you're Mr. Brown?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, this pretty, seems pretty standard. Robin, are there any points of concern?
Nope, we had no issues. Nothing came through.
Everything's good. Everything was approved.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion on the, to approve the change of manager for Pizzeria Uno Chicago Bar and Grill, 100 Charlton Road, from Dorothy Weagle to Christopher Brown.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you for coming in.
Good night. Sorry to put you through that.
Okay. And then consideration going to action item C, consideration of possible action on issuance of a common victular license to the Little Rest Stop. So what's going on here, Robin?
So, yep.
Come on, Yannis.
So these, these people, these five people came in last week and were unaware that they were going to need a common vic license.
Okay.
And they're hoping, they were hoping to open next week, I believe. And they had already gone through some of the processes, but they, they had not gone through other things that they needed to. They have since gotten through everything. I believe the only thing outstanding now is the final health sign-off, which is scheduled for after this, once this gets through.
Okay.
So what I would be asking tonight is for you to support them receiving their, their common vic license. It's going to be breakfast and-
Breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch. And then of course, obviously it would be, they not be able to accept the license until the health signs are filed. But this would allow them to open on schedule.
Yes. Okay. Any questions, thoughts, concerns from the board? Okay, do we have a motion?
Thursday through Monday. It's nice to have another breakfast, lunch. I was just looking for my own purposes in town.
The other question I did want to bring up on this for, for this group, and it's a policy decision we may want to look at, but I am going to ask the board if they would consider not to put you all on the spot, but there's no way to do it other than publicly. Right now, they have to apply for the license and pay how much?
$40.
$40. Technically, this license is going to expire again on December 31st.
I think it's fine to waive. I'm fine waiving the $40 for this year.
Yeah, absolutely. And so it may be pay it for this, this one and then waive the renewal fee. You're going to officially have to renew on January 1st?
No, 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 no. You would waive it for the initial, for the month, next month, and then you waive it. Then you're just, you have to pay it next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the common victular license to the Little Rest Stop, waiving the 2025 license fee of $40 and then with the understanding that you'll resume the normal common victular fees in 2026. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you for coming in.
Oh, I was just looking. I think it's great that you're going to be open on Mondays. Because a lot of restaurants close on Mondays.
That's what we were thinking.
And you're taking your, not vacation days, but your time off Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
I'm hoping to capitalize on it. We did a little research in regards to the businesses in town and there is no way to open on Monday.
Right, yeah, Mondays is-
Holidays for the school, kids have nothing to do, people have nothing to do, teachers. We figured we'd capitalize on that. So.
I love the name of it.
Oh, thank you. It's after-
Little Rest Road in Warren.
So yeah, so Little Rest Road in Warren. There was Little Rest Farm that my grandparents had. It was 190 acres, so it'd honor them.
Oh, wow. When do you hope to open?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh.
So we were hoping to open last week, but we knew about this and we just, everything, the amount of work that we've done in place just kind of slipped through the cracks. So we actually postponed everything for a week.
Well, let me ask you this. You're from Worcester?
I, we, she grew up in Brynfield and I grew up in Warren, actually, but we live in Worcester.
Did you find it difficult to know what you needed to do in order to open up your restaurant here in terms of the paperwork? No, I just want you to be honest because-
Yes. So we, I mean, we're pretty active and I've, I worked for Legal Seals for like 10 years. I had like 15 restaurants and I also worked for the One Ten Group. I have three restaurants that I operate with them. And yes, it was a little difficult finding the checklist itself that we needed to get done.
Just navigating. It would have been nice to be like, hey, you are required to have-
That's what we're trying to do with Streamline, but I guess it's not working. Where did you, may I ask where you went first and second?
Well, we, I, our first priority was the Health Department. So we started there first just to open a channel of communication and then the Building Department. And then honestly, we just asked a lot of people and looked online. And then went on to the Town Line, the Sturbridge Town website and tried to go through everything that we needed in order to open up a business.
Because we're going to have to improve our, because they seem like they're seasoned in this.
There is supposed to be a checklist.
There is supposed, yeah.
Well, so there is, I think we didn't see it.
You did not.
Yeah, I'll follow the sword.
This is not on you.
I'll follow the sword, you know, but-
No, this is not on you at all.
You know, with the companies that I work for, it's, it's all the same. You know, so it just all breaks down in terms of like-
Because we're trying to make a concerted effort that this doesn't happen. So I was just curious, when you said that there was a lot, you know, that you weren't aware of-
It was like, oh, thanks for talking to us. Go talk to this person. And I was like, okay, now talk to this. So it was a little bit of, I was going around in order to get to where we-
I'm not going to make you guys, hold you guys any longer, but, but just Robin, so going forward, maybe what we should do is I think everybody probably who's going to the restaurant industry or doing similar food and beverage work knows that they're going to have to engage with the Board of Health. So we should probably have a, if we can, interface with them to have more cohesive handoffs and just even if it's just a form you hand them, because that would make-
Yes, and I think economic development needs to-
E2, yeah, that's where I was going to say.
As well. And it should be both, because people do start with health. That's a natural place for, for you to start, but we also need it coming out of economic development.
One of the reasons we created that position.
Exactly. And so, you know, I did talk last week because of this issue about the fact that we all collectively, when someone comes in or any of us in any of the building development departments get somebody coming in, they automatically should send them to economic development where they then receive a sheet saying, these are the things you need for each of these types of businesses.
For the next meeting, can you get us a draft of the sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right, I'm going to let you guys, it's real, because it is 6:45.
Good luck.
And we have a public hearing.
Everybody in town was super helpful.
Oh, no, I know.
I don't say rude, foolishly.
You're not, you're not ratting anybody out.
No, no, still, I mean, I think it's, you know, I wanted to publicly say that. Everybody was being very helpful along the road, you know, and it wasn't just the fact that we hit everything. There was a lot of work that needed to be done.
Sure.
So we all progressed as much as we wanted to. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Mary Dowling, if you would, help me, Mary.
It's on me. Oh.
Yeah.
Notification is hereby given, 6:45, that an application has been filed by Manja Benny?
And?
Manja, Manja.
Manja.
Manja. Sorry about that. I didn't, I saw the eye and I-
We're going to put Ewell in brand, so people know it's Ewell.
I know that.
For a liquor license, all alcohol beverages at the premises currently located at 139 Main Street Sturbridge with the Sturbridge Select Board. In accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held December 1, 2025, at 6:45 PM. The hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street Sturbridge.
All right. Now, just please introduce yourself for the record.
Sure, I'm James Hunter. Currently, we have a restaurant and Irish pub in Worcester. Previously, we owned the Grafton Inn in Grafton Hotel Function Room Restaurant. And we're applying for this Italian cafe and deli called Manja Benny.
So if I might, they're relatively early on in their process. They realize all that we've talked about on the heels of the other conversation, the other things that they need to get done. And the Health Department is already in touch with Health and Fire and whatnot. So at this point, we just want to get the liquor license in progress because we know ABCC takes a little bit of time. So we wanted to get it moving forward. The board, obviously pending, like we do all of them, all of the other final approvals.
And kind of to piggyback a little bit on the Little Rest Stop, you've been extremely helpful. Francis was very helpful. Terry with EDC and Jean, the Town Planner. So everybody kind of came together in the last couple of weeks to kind of, you know, get me through the, the little couple of hurdles we had to, so.
Oh, good.
Contingent, you know, everything would be contingent upon me doing the other applications, this, this liquor license. So, but yeah, like Robin said, we just want to get it to the, get it to Boston, because that's what takes the longest.
Well, go ahead. Questions from the board?
Well, I just have to do what Mary always asks. God bless her and rest her soul. Tip certified?
Oh, yeah. Serve Safe, yep, all that. Yep.
That was always her classic question and-
Yep.
Have to ask it.
You have to ask it. You have to ask it.
Now we have to be.
No, of course, but-
Yep.
And this is in Bedrock, correct?
Yep, yep, yep.
Any other questions, thoughts? All right, well, this is a public hearing. If anybody from the audience wants to come up and ask any questions or comment. All right, this is your opportunity. Going once sold. Yeah, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I would like to keep my executive session. I need to make sure that it stays open before you close the public.
I think you're, that, don't worry about that. This is totally different. This is just on the liquor license. Thank you. So the, so we had a second, I believe. Do we have?
A second, yeah.
Yeah, second. And, all right, all those in favor? All right, all right, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from the board. Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the liquor license to Manja Benny.
Manja.
Manja.
Ewell.
For, yeah, for the premises currently located at 139 Main Street Sturbridge, Mass.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, welcome to town.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are returning to our action items, specifically consideration and possible action to partner with the Holland Select Board on a joint application to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Community-
Thank you.
-IT Grant Program for fiscal 2026. What's going on here, Robin?
So this is pretty straightforward. Jeremy is here. If there are any questions, and basically it's, I believe it's all fiber optic related and whether they have capacity. And we don't have any issues, so.
No, so basically they're trying to hook in, because we have fiber optic beginning at 20 and 148, right?
Yep.
So they're trying to basically just hook in there and get state funding to do so?
What it appears like, yeah, that's, that's what I'm sensing. It's from Holland, it's out of Holland, if you want to come up and address it.
Yeah.
Oh, we have, we have representative from school here.
Yeah.
This is Steve Rich.
Hi.
He's from Tantasco. Yeah, so they're going from Holland to the junior high. We do have some fiber there. It's, it may be limited and that's all we have to just figure out exactly how many strands we can afford to lose.
Okay, and, and so this is a, this connection, so this is a grant from the state, I take it?
So you guys already got the grant. Was it 2021?
Uh, yes.
So you wouldn't have to file, I don't believe you'd have to file the grant for Sturbridge. It would just be Holland filing the grant. We just need to have like an MOU in place between the towns saying that you, the town of Sturbridge is willing to work with the town of Holland, whatever, however that process goes between the towns to allow us to hook in to your fiber optic strands that you're not using.
Okay.
And that'll save about four miles of fiber optics running.
Okay. And it'll also save having to open up four miles of road, I take.
Yes.
Okay, I don't, it seems pretty straightforward to me. Do questions, concerns from the board? Mary Dowling, you have anything?
No, it says no cost impact to Sturbridge, it says, so.
No.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we partner with the Holland Select Board on a joint application to the Commonwealth of Mass Community Impact IT Grant Program for fiscal year 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, the next action item is consideration and possible action and declare items as surplus is listed in the DPW memorandum dated November 21st. I'll just read it out loud for people. So basically, it's a 2004 International 7400 Catch Basin Plow Sander Combo, 2007 Chevrolet Silverado 3,050 HD. That's not going to pass inspection. 202012 JD 6430, four-wheel drive with side boom mower, a Husqvarna Z254 F 54-inch zero-turn motor, a JD 300 Ride-On mower, 42-inch mower deck, JD GX255 lawnmower. And at a high level, I believe these are all being, they're not reliable and have broken down, and for the case of automotive, will not pass inspection. So basically, they're not safe equipment. Okay, any questions about any of these items from the board?
They're old.
We've got our use out of them.
Yeah. Okay, so with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to declare the items as surplus as listed in the Department of Public Works memorandum dated November 21, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
So just out of curiosity, how will they get discarded?
They'll be auctioned and if they don't meet their minimum bid on auction, they potentially just go for a record.
Okay, but they will be auctioned first.
So we're not going to do a back and forth off the mics, because nobody at home can hear it.
Oh, sorry.
So basically, the answer to the question was there'll be auction on the Mass website. And then what was the other question, Mary?
That was it. How are they going to be discarded? But first, it'll be auctioned and if it doesn't meet the minimum bid, then it's going to be discarded.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, then action item F, consideration of possible action on the reappointment of William Barnesley to the Historic Commission with a term to expire November 17, 2028. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. And then consideration and possible action on appointing Michael Harrington of the Public House to the Betterment Committee for a term to expire December 1, 2026.
So we needed somebody from the industry and-
No, it's great.
It seemed to be the perfect choice for that.
Yeah, no, he's been a good community partner. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. So consideration of possible action on accepting the resignation from Carrie Leonard, full-time dispatcher as of November 13, 2025. So she just accepted a role with the Manchester Police Department. Did anybody do an exit interview?
I did not. I will check with the chief.
Okay. With that, I'm going to make a, unless there's conversation, I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation from Carrie Leonard, full-time dispatcher as of November 13, 2025, with our thanks for her service. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. So going on to the licenses, I think how we did it last time, it probably makes most sense, is I'm just going to read them out loud and then we call out a hold if someone asks something they're concerned about. And then we'll deal with the holds and then vote on the group.
And I will tell you that everything that's being presented tonight, I mean, you may have individual questions, but has been cleared through a cellar. So it's going through the departmental checklist, everything that's on tonight.
Okay. All right, starting with American Legion, Annie's Country Kitchen, Burger King, Cedar Street Cafe, Candessa Restaurant and Tequila Bar, The Duck and Avellino's, Cedar Street Grill, Cracker Barrel, Deep Roots Distillery, The Barn at White Farm, Dunkin' Donuts, Economy Lodge, Enrico's Brick Oven Pizza, Gito's Brick Oven Pizza, Hamilton Inn, Hamilton Rotten Gun, Kaizen, La Quinta Inn, McNutt's Fresh Marketplace, Ocean State Job Lot, Old Sturridge Village, Canara Bread, Pine Lake RV Resort cottages, Pizzeria Uno Chicago Bar and Grill, Public House, Rapsgallion, The Scottish Inn, Sturbridge Auto Sales, Sturbridge Gas, Sturbridge Border House, Sturbridge Seafood, Subway Number 37166, Teddy's Pub and Grill, Thai Place, excuse me, Tooty Quanti, Village Pizza, Wendy's Extra Mark.
I am going to ask on Deep Roots that you do hold on that one.
Okay.
I just have an email that came in, Deep Roots Distillery.
Okay.
We just have a use question and I need to address that with Jean and Bill before we move forward.
All right, so we'll strike Deep Roots for now. Okay, do we have any, so we had no comments. So do we have a motion to approve the listed business license?
I will make a motion to approve the listed business licenses.
Oh, you know what? I apologize. I apologize. We're good. I'm sorry. I'm getting emails as we speak, so if you want to have that one back in.
All right, all right. So Deep Roots is no longer struck.
Hey, back on.
So the listed, we have a motion to approve the listed business licenses, including Deep Roots Distillery that we had put an exemption on. So moved.
Moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you.
How many businesses do you have that haven't submitted yet?
Uh, haven't submitted at all?
Five?
Seven.
So about seven we haven't heard from at all. We have several that have applied but still have some outstanding things that they need to complete.
Okay.
And just seven, no, nothing yet.
We need one more reach out today to the board.
Do we, we reach out to them and say we haven't got?
Yes, we are actively proactive. We email, reach out, send letters. And the, I don't want to know what they are, but they're still active businesses that you know are still in operation. Yes.
Okay. So the, okay, moving on to old business. So I think we had held this first piece for after Mary passing, when we had a full board about who is going to be appointed to the Town Betterment Committee and who will be appointed to the Personal Classification and Policy Committee. So does anybody want to volunteer for either of those?
I'll volunteer for the betterment.
Oh.
Oh, you got that?
That's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm positive.
I feel badly now.
No.
Okay.
All right. I'll do it for, I'll do it for a year and then you can do it. I just did this before and I enjoyed it, but if you, if you want.
No, it's okay.
Well, it's almost as if we have two people that I want to do and we have two of them. So, Mary Lou, will you be willing to be on the Personnel, Classification and Policy Committee?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mary Dowling to the Town Betterment Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. And then I will also make a motion to appoint Mary Lou Volpe to the Personal Classification and Policy Committee with our great thanks. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you both. Okay, and then we're going back to our abatement conversation on 26 Audubon Way, correct? Okay, and then we're going back to our abatement conversation on 26 Audubon Way, correct? So Heather, if you could start and then, uh, we'll get to you in a minute, this, we'll start. So Heather, what, what did we find?
Um, so I think you have documentation of the water, oh, the meter testing and as we thought, it was tested completely within the acceptable ranges. Um, I also did a little bit further deep dive to provide you guys with some additional information on how meters are tested, the standards are there, I gave you the information around, not just tested, but what standards meters have to meet, because there were some questions, I think, from the board about how accurate these meters and consistent they are. But water meters are designed to be basically foolproof, consistent, and when they do usually fail, they usually just fail and don't read at all, um, like stop spinning. So the meter, the way it works is it has a mutating disc in it, it has a disc and when the water goes through it, rocks back and forth and each rock is considered a, basically a, a point, a, a tick. Each tick has a certain volume, that's what those meter testing has done. In addition, I did do some deeper dives into the day, on-day results from, um, the meter log that we did. We lot, were able to log his meter for 180 days back then. At the time, we got some very fancy charts that showed that the usage was higher, but if you went into the data Excel itself, which is a lot of points, because it's an hour piece of data every hour, you could see consistently, uh, during very certain periods, high usage. And when I say high, it really wasn't that high, it's, it was like two to three gallons per minute, which is not anything more than a fire hose, your toilet can leak at that, you couldn't, your sprinkler system would normally even use more than that. Um, so his leak, although it was a lot over a community period of time, it's because it happened so frequently, it wasn't constant, it was for a couple hours on and then a couple hours off. There were times during, when you looked over a period of days that it seemed like it happened consistently at a certain time in the evening, um, later in the evening. So I, I didn't find anything that says that, you know, the meter wasn't acting correctly because it would go down to zero flow and go back up and then before this period of time, it had completely normal flow and after this period of time, it had completely normal flow. But there was a period that went between mid-May and mid-Jul, mid-June, that he had high usage every, almost every day, not every day, but almost every day, um, for a period of a couple hours. And when I say high, two gallons to three gallons a minute, which isn't anything we'd wouldn't expect from a leaking toilet. And it, with it being intermittent, it could have been that also.
So let me just understand the base level here and then we'll go from there.
Yep.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, is that this, um, from a period from May to, was it July, I believe?
Yeah, it was, um, so the billing period, the data that we were able to log was from May 3rd to, um, November 30th.
Okay.
Because that's when we did the log, so that was 180. It covered three different parts of three different billing periods, so not, and one of them completely. So the one that he's looking actually to abate would be the billing period we were able to cover completely.
Okay.
That's that 7-1 to 9-30, okay? The first high, high flow, which is, I'm saying that was higher than normal, like that two to three gallons, was on May 9th. The next time it occurred was May 20th. Those rates were 60, uh, one to two and a half gallons per minute, which is 60 to 150 gallons per hour.
Okay.
And that, it consistently happened from 5:20 to 7:06 every day and then stopped, which he did say he was away for a period of time, it stopped, there was no flow in the house, from 7, 7 to 7:11 and then started again on 7:11 to 7:25. Our bills for the period previous, which he did have high usage, went out on 7:22, so we would have received them right around 7:25.
Okay, so that flow, two to three gallons per hour, so that's a, that's a high flow, but it's consistent with a leak, is that fair?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a washing machine, it's not a normal bathroom usage or anything like that, probably.
Well, I mean...
Unless there's a malfunction.
Or like if you're filling a tub, like a big soaker tub, that could be a big soaker tub. I don't know, you know, I don't know what was happening to say, but yes, could it be consistent, you know, you 60 gallons in an hour, you fill up, you know, one of those huge soaker tubs or 100 gallons.
Makes sense to me, so any questions from the board?
Are we going to hear again?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to let Mr. Fusso come up too. Just starting with Heather.
We don't have that original chart in front of us where it, was it one day you and I were talking about it?
There was one particular day.
It went just crazy and I, I just don't have an explanation for that.
Yeah, I don't know that...
It would just spike ridiculously high and then it came right back down and that looked very odd to me.
So, these parts, like this, this one?
Yeah, what's the date?
That's not the one she's talking about.
I think, what?
I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, no, this was just this, boom, down.
I think it was, Heather, I...
Oh, that's, it's just, but...
That one.
That, that one. Well, but that's just one single day.
I understand that, but like...
But that's, yeah, so that isn't, um, so that, I mean, you, it could have been that day he watered his lawn.
With that kind of a reading, is that in...
So this is, this isn't, this is, these cubic feet, this is actually not the right scale, I don't believe, because when we, that printout that we get from that, it doesn't take into account our significant figures. So when we set up our meters and we read them, they read a certain number of digits. That digit doesn't have its decimal place in it until we take it into our program and the program interprets it. We have to take, we have to divide everything by 10.
So on that, that particular day, how much water did he use according to our meter reading?
12 cubic feet.
And what does the normal household use? I mean, that...
So 10 cubic feet times seven point, it's, it's 70, so it's, that was 100 cubic, uh, 100 gallons.
100 gallons?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Okay, well, that's helpful, anything else for Heather Farthing, Mr. Fusso? Mr. Fusso, come on down, please. All right, um, well, first, anything you'd like to say? Okay, go ahead, start.
Just to reintroduce myself, Bernard Fusso, and very diligent, I'm an engineer, so very diligent with systems. I feel like the picture that is being painted is inaccurate, so I would like to clarify. We were only gone for three days, not for the entire period. And when we were gone, before we travel and anything like that, we would check everything before we go. When the first bill came in, I brought in, personally, I was checking everything, but I also brought in external folks, contractors to check, they didn't find anything then. And so I think to make it sound like if I did my own research as well and the amount that I'm being charged and the water usage consistent with that, even if we had a swimming pool and we had filled and cleaned it and refilled it, you would not see that bill. A bill is usually about $400 over a period of three months. It was more than five times that for two consecutive periods. And you look at the data and on specific days that we were there, I spent $600 to get to the bottom, I shared a copy of the report, um, we brought people in to check it. So I think while the meter may be right currently at the point of testing, it doesn't go back to tell us all that it was doing before the testing was done. So I feel like I am being blamed for spending more money to be diligent and clarifying and checking things and for a usage that is never consistent with household usage. Even if there was a leak, you shouldn't see this. And again, there was no leak because we checked it and spent money to get into it. So I think the meter resources is there, but it is instantaneous and doesn't tell us in the past, which I believe we kind of all came to that point. So I still be, I went ahead and paid it as, as a dutiful, um, citizen, but I paid it just because of that and I really hope that we can consider the abatement because paying more than five times my water bill over two period, it is more than two years worth of payment that I have just paid over the last three months and I, I really hope that we can consider it because, yeah, spend money to investigate a leak, didn't find anything and the report doesn't tell us there was a leak, it's all speculation that we think maybe there was a leak here and there, but you look at the graph and that leak is not even consistent with swimming pools, so, uh, yeah.
So Heather, we're not going to do call and response, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Fusso.
Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so the, um, so this is a, you know, I, I'm open-minded to the board's thoughts on this and, but kind of just, and I think I said this to you already, typically when you cross the property line, the, the, i-if we know that it's not the town's fault, meaning up to the meter, which is why we paid to have the meter inspected, the, the burden of whatever is occurring happens on the property and it does seem that the meter, based upon the, the vendor we used, at least back 180 days, the meter is accurate, is that fair, Heather?
So the meter readings consistently prior to this higher use and after this higher use are consistent and seem to be normal, there was definitely a period of time that usage was higher, but it was up and down within those, within a day, so it wasn't like it went up and stayed at a certain level.
Sure.
So it looked like usage and then we had the meter tested and the, and the meter test results are way consistent with...
But, but boil, but the boiled down point is, is that there's no indication that the meter's inaccurate.
Correct.
Or needs to be replaced.
So that, so that time dial was tested.
Yeah, no, I get that, but that's, but it, there is a data path back 180 days, so that 180 days, if it's showing usage that is spiking and your, uh, and your usage now is normalized, it would indicate that the, that there is something, was something leaking on the property and this is probably sprinkler time of year is where these leaks goes. Now, I don't, I don't know that, but the, the issue we have is the, the regulator is that's not really our burden to sort out, right? It's, and it's pretty brutal, I, I understand that, but it really is that kind of demarcation point. But with that, I have talked enough, so what does the rest of the board think about this?
Yeah, I want, I want you to know I sympathize with you and I'm sorry that this happened to you, I just don't see where the town is at fault for this, for this issue. You know, showing that the meter went up and down does show usage, it wasn't like there was a leak, a pipe broke and it was a constant flow until it shut off and, you know, the burden goes on the rest of the ratepayers and I just don't see how that's justified here.
Mary Dowling?
Well, hi, the last time you were here, I think I asked, um, I think you indicated what you said, the same thing tonight, that after you got your first bill, you had a plumber, you had, um, professionals come in. And I think I asked that if you had a copy of their bill and they're in writing saying no, we found nothing wrong. Did you bring that tonight?
I attached it to the official abatement that, and there was an email that I sent out.
Oh, I remember, what, was it from the...
From, from the professional plumber.
And the plum, I'm sorry, I don't remember saying, and the plumber said I have found nothing wrong in this house?
Yeah, they...
Where is that? Let me just, because I guess my only problem...
It's coming from work, so I don't have that information, but I did attach.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't think I...
I didn't think we had a written, no. We had an email from you, but I didn't think we had one directly from the plumber.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to go to them and get a very specific, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. My, my recollection was there was an invoice, I don't remember.
Oh, I don't remember saying that. Was this the invoice from when you first got your very first bill? This is not your first bill.
No, this is not the first bill, this is after the second bill, after I thought the first bill correction had been made, then the vendor, this same vendor, um, they did a minor repair, but they also, and I, I thought I attached that report that said that they checked everything, they didn't see anything, previous plumbers had checked it too, but that one they didn't ensure, what they just came in, did a walkthrough and whatnot. And again, I just want to mention that the leak that we are talking about, if you do the math, it had to be absolutely significant, more like a water, it, this is not a wa, a toilet leak or anything like that and we can have the debate on that, but, um, again, I just feel like the meter instantaneously is right and we are going back to say that we think because it is right today, it is right every time.
I understand, I think that's the conclusion. I think that the conclusion, what we're saying is, is that the meter appears correct and that the usage, the indication of the usage is retroactive, 180 days is, seems accurate and consistent with the actual events in question. Where the, my concern would be on the, the meter usage was if that the meter wasn't recording the events properly or was recording something static and then, uh, and is now working, it, that's, in, it is indicative that the meter is functional and that's what the inspector is telling us. So that's what our, the people assigned to do that is, anyways, Mary, you were, I didn't mean to...
So you, so this was from October, you don't have anything from the first...
The ones previous to that were all walkthroughs without anything found, walkthrough by myself, my wife.
Right, but you don't, I, I understand, but you don't have anything in writing saying we found nothing?
I think I can get something from them if...
Well, that's what I had, yeah, that's what I had hoped for from the last time when we continued this. I had hoped that I'd have something from them saying there's no leak, because this one says, remove leaking pipe.
Yeah, and this one was, I believe this one was early November, late October, there about.
Right.
Yeah, so that one, because I became absolutely diligent and was basically checking everything daily because the bill continued to be high and that was when I saw a leak, right? Again, we fixed it immediately, this was outside of the period of the bill and before that year.
No, I know, I guess what I was hoping for was something back when these bills came through that said that there was no leak. Which I don't dis-believe you, but it's just easier when there's something in...
Sure.
In writing.
Sure.
I, I guess, my only problem with this, I do have a problem and it's almost impossible for a resident to prove, right, that it wasn't them, because they can hire people and they can say there's nothing wrong, but, and it's not just Heather, it was, you know, our former DP, they never think that a meat water meter can have intermittent problems, but when I AI'd it, it says that you, it can have intermittent problems, um, when it's starting to fail. So, um, water meters can fail intermittently, so that, you know, that tells me that sometimes it can test properly and other times it doesn't, but we always assume that it, it can't do that and I guess I have a hard time grappling with, how does a resident prove that it was the meter?
Well, this is, but as someone who's on water and sewer, the, that's the benefit that I have of not having a septic system and a, and a, and a well. It's that the, when it comes onto my line, it's, that's just going, if it's on the property and it's my issue, I'm going to have to deal with it and it's still water and sewer, by and large, is still, a failure on my property is still much less than a well failure or a well drying out or a septic failing. So I, I, it is a, and I do, again, I echo Chase's sentiment, I, I, it's a brutal approach and, and it is, to Mary's point, can be potentially unfair, but with that, um, the, if, when in doubt, if we don't see anything that the towns are on, we don't grant these abatements.
I was just saying that the volume of leak is not consistent with normal household leak, right? So, yeah, that's, that's where...
Well, that's, that's the, not, well, we're being informed by our DPW director, so...
Six times what we typically use as a normal leak?
Well, when it's constant, it is.
Well, we're not going to, this is, we're not...
You just said it wasn't constant.
But we're not, we're going to knock it into a back and forth.
I think I'm in the minority, so I think, thank you for coming forward, but it's not going to...
I just want to make sure that, I just feel like we have the data, but the interpretation is not consistent with it, we just said that it wasn't normal leak, it was like intermittent...
But it's intermittently...
But Heather, that's all right. And so, so we, we understand, we understand the point, I think, um, uh, do we have a motion on this?
Uh, I'll make a motion to abate it in half because I don't think, we'll really get to the bottom of whether it was an intermittent leak or an intermittent failure of the water meter.
All right, uh, do we have a second?
Good luck, sir.
Yeah, so, all right, do we have, uh, that motion failing? Do we have another motion?
I don't think you need one, right?
Oh, no, because we're granting, yeah.
That was a motion.
Yeah, yeah, so we failed, so, all right, I'm sorry, sir, that I can't be more helpful on that and we do, we empathize with you. All right, going on to, um, new business, Mary Lou. Mary Lou?
Nothing.
Chase?
No, no, thank you.
Mary Dowling?
Nothing new.
And then I have nothing new. Correspondents, we have, oh, I guess it's Mary.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, if you, if they're handy for you, you can, with our correspondence.
I think it's the Mass Lottery Keno and Mobile Gas, Mass DPU, Notice of Public Hearing, thank you for the, from the Town of Amherst for the mutual aid with the UMass Fire, and a DCR notification on dam safety.
Yes. Thank you. Did we already go through all our old business? We had one thing of OBIT, but I don't think we were asked.
Oh, yeah, do you have additional old business?
I just had a question last week, when you did your, two weeks ago, when you did your department update. You had said you, you met with representative of the Sanians Church about access to the water tower, something, you had some kind of meeting about access, and I just wondered what that meeting was about.
We had a meeting with, several weeks back, with Father Luke and the gentleman that represents them, Mr. Mimalt, talking about access, and we no longer will have T-Mobile on the water tower. They did not renew their lease. And there were some issues with the church and T-Mobile that are not our issues.
Right.
But there are questions of where the property lines are, where the easements are and whatnot, and that's what we're discussing and trying to clean up old confusion that dates back probably to the '30s in the original lane of the water line.
But I just want to ensure that because that is our right of way right now, that we have a duty to, to maintain it so that we have access to that water tower, just like we maintain all the other roads that lead to the water towers.
This is, this is, yeah, then this is different from just maintenance. It's actually what the location of the easement is, and the water line actually doesn't run where the easement is, which is...
Right.
A little bit of a problem or confusion. So, all right. I just want, I don't have any other old business.
Okay. Moving to approval of minutes, I'm looking first at the October 6, 2025 minutes. Any edits?
No.
I have none.
Mary Dowling?
I wasn't here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't think I was present at this meeting.
Oh, yeah, you weren't. That makes it easier. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting as written?
Go move.
Say it.
All right. All those in favor? Great, thank you. Moving to the October 20th, 2025, meeting minutes, any edits? And Mary Lou, you weren't at this one. Chase, Mary Dowling, any edits?
Nothing for me, no.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting, notes, minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 20th, 2025 minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor? And one exception. Moving to, and this one, you're not at, Chase. We're the November 3, 2025, meeting minutes, any edits? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? And one exception. And then moving to the November 17, 2025, meeting minutes. Again, Chase, you weren't at this one. Do we have any edits to these minutes?
No.
All right. Unless someone has an edit, I will make a motion to approve the November 17, 2025, meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Francis, nice job on the minutes.
Yeah, really good ones.
They're just, they're brief, but you give a little bit of detail, and thank you.
Okay. Citizens Forum, anybody have anything in the section? Okay. Nothing for Citizens Forum. All right. Executive session, we have a few items, a couple items in executive session, but I know earlier in this meeting, Mr. Keefe stated that she wanted to have her portion of executive session in public?
Yes.
Okay. So the, let me find the language here. So we are basically reopening the determination by, pardon, strike that, the recommendation by the town administrator to terminate Mr. Keefe as your, as VSO, part-time VSO for the town. No, we're not going to be opening up the hearing for this. So how this works is you have your process rights, you had a right to be heard, and then we investigated the allegations made in that hearing, and we found them to be without merit using a third-party investigator. Consequently, I'm going to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the town administrator and terminate Mr. Keefe from employment with the town. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And I'm going to abstain, not based on disagreement, just because I try not to get involved in termination cases because of what else I do.
Great. So on that note, we are going to go into executive session. Mary?
Yes. I will make a motion, hold on here a little bit, that we move into executive session under Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual, and not to re-convene in open session.
And we also have a second one on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On 21A6.
And also under Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And also under Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements.
And for the record, the first item was already heard...
Okay.
Per request of the person in public session.
Yeah. And so we heard that in Mr. Keefe's case in public session, not a request.
That will no longer be discussed.
And that will no longer be discussed. So with that, the chair declares executive session appropriate. Mary Lou, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mary Dowling?
Yes.
And I vote yes.